Good evening. The board has now returned from closed session and will begin the regular session of the Keys Union School District Board of Trustees meeting. Item 4.1, report out closed session items. We have nothing to report out. Moving on to item 4.2, approval amendment of agenda. Do we have any Dana? Any amendments? All right. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as is?
A motion.
We got a first, we got a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to flag salute. I guess you're up Wes.
Will everybody please rise? One nation under God, in this one.
Thank you. Everybody's phones going off from Pittman's teleparents. And then moving on to invitation to address the board trustees. Dana, do we have any? We have one? Mr. Serta? Come on down.
Hello, everybody. Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Josué Serta and I'm a father of three that go here. And I'm also the PE parent here in Keys Elementary. And what I wanted to voice my concern about today was the food that's been given to the kids, just not mine in particular, but you know, the whole school. This all came about because I was just curious to see what our kids were eating and how they were, you know, what they were eating throughout the day. The more I started looking into it, the more I realized the food here wasn't really adequate enough. And by adequate, I mean the sugar content inside the meals and the breakfast that were being provided was very high. Now, I'm not sure if we know, everybody knows how sugar affects the brain, but too much sugar can cause the brain to not concentrate. It affects the learning and retention processes as well, too. It also affects the motor control. I've been doing a lot of research on this and I've actually done a paper on it as well, too, recently. So it just gave me more interest to see what is going on with the kids' food. The, it's, I don't see it as, how do I say? It's not, I don't see it as a bad thing. It's just the amount of sugar that's in these snacks and foods that we have is kind of high. I've noticed some of them up to 23 grams, 32 grams of sugar. So that's like about three tablespoons of sugar in the morning. You know, and these kids are eating that in the morning. So I don't think that's good for them, especially if we want them to sit down and pay attention. The other thing that I also wanted to address was the lunches. Now, the lunches, I've noticed that the pizzas, they've been throwing them away, the students have, because they don't like it. And I've asked them, you know, what, why don't you guys like it? They say, oh, it's just, it's too greasy, or it's overcooked, it's inside plastic. A lot of it gets thrown away. And me being here in person seeing that, I'm just like, well, that's, it's not a good thing. A lot of these kids need proper nutrition. And if we're not giving that to them, they aren't having that nutrition to drive themselves through the school day. And this is not like something that I want to put on a particular person. I just want us as a community together to get together and say, hey, what can we do to better the types of food that we give to our children? Because if we want them to stay focused, sugar is something that I don't think we should be giving them in the morning. And we need to give them things that have more nutrients in there with their foods. Now, I know we do give them a milk and a pear, but most kids eat the actual food. Unfortunately for the pizzas, they don't. But you can imagine a kid who hasn't ate the day before goes out through most of the day not eating. He's not going to have much energy to concentrate, won't want to concentrate in class, which disrupts the class and the teacher's going to have to address that. But with that being said as well, too, the second concern that I had was that the students do take a fair amount of Takis, Hot Cheetos, Doritos, sugar candy, all those things, they take into school. And I see it on a regular basis. And I ask them, do you guys eat breakfast? Oh, well, it's because I have this. And I tell them, well, you guys better eat breakfast because it's, you know, it's healthy. You guys get to eat something healthy. But they have these family-sized bag ones. And they'll eat the whole thing. And I've seen to where the students go to the nurse and they throw up. And it's just, it's not, you know, it's not pretty. But Mr. Moran's also tried to address that with some of the students, telling them, hey, you guys need to eat something healthy. But again, we, I don't know if we have control over that or not. But I feel like we should, as the parents and educators, tell these students, you know what, you guys can't bring this to school because it's not good for you, it doesn't help you concentrate. It doesn't provide any nutritional value. And it shouldn't be a good thing that we should allow our students to continue consuming these products that aren't any good for them. That's pretty much, pretty much what I wanted to say. And I hope that we can come to something in this community to where we can provide something of nutritional value. I do feel it's a concern of mine that feels that needs to be addressed immediately. If anything, I can help with whatever it is that you guys want me to acquire, anything nutritious or anything of that. I'm open for it and I would like to help as well, too. I just hope you guys can help with that.
Perfect. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Appreciate the comment. Without any others, we'll move on to announcements. 7.1, Spratling Middle School Open House Science Fair is May 12. 7.2, Spratling Middle School Seventh Grade Award Assembly is May 13. Keys to Learning Charter Senior Grad Night is May 13. Keys Elementary School Talent Show is May 19. Keys Elementary School Open House is May 19. 7.6, Keys to Learning Charter Spring Dance is from 8 to 12. It's not a zoo dance. I thought it was zoo themed. I asked Betty Jo what it was. Moving on to 7.7, Keys to Learning Charter Case Six Award Ceremony is May 23. Spratling Middle School Eighth Grade Banquet Dance and Bus Around the Community is May 23. Keys Elementary School Mile Madness is May 25. Spratling Middle School Eighth Grade Promotion and Graduations, May 25. Spratling Middle School Sixth Grade Awards Assemblies, May 26. Keys to Learning Charter Junior High Promotions, May 26. Keys Elementary School Fifth Grade Clapout is May... Last Day School? Thank you. Keys to Learning Charter High School Graduation is May 27. May is a busy month for everybody. Moving on to 8.1, staff reports. We've read the reports. So we have any questions or concerns? All right. Thank you. Moving on to Student Council. Are they in the room? Yeah, there you guys are. I would have you do the flag salute. Come on up. We brought a crowd for you girls.
Good evening, everyone. We are the student representatives for Spratling Middle School. I'm Johnson Jimenez, the president of Student Council.
Hello, I'm Roxana Rosca and I'm the vice president of Student Council. The first topic we will be talking about is the May Flowers Art Contest winners. The winners of this contest were Vanessa Vasquez and Abigail Sanchez.
On Friday, the fifth graders came to SMS. We showed them around the school and answered their interesting questions. They also had lunch at SMS, which they enjoyed. We are planning on having Kona Ice on Friday for students that have perfect attendance during state testing. We've all been working hard on testing these past two weeks.
On Friday, we were also having two assemblies. We were having an equity assembly and our sports awards assembly. Seventh and eighth grade will have their end of the year awards on May 20. Eighth will be at 8 o'clock and seventh will be at 9:30. Sixth grade will have theirs on Thursday, May 26 at 1 o'clock. Open house is this Thursday, May 12, 5 to 7 p.m. 5 to 5:30, there will be free hot dog meals for the SMS families. The science fair will begin, will be in the gym. 5:30 to 7 o'clock are the class visits. 7 o'clock, new sixth graders orientation. And the eighth grade parent meetings. A variety of community programs will have tables set up.
Sixth grader will be leaving to outdoor education, May 18 at 1:30 and will be coming back that Friday. This will be the first time in three years that a sixth grade class will be attending outdoor education. Today, 23 eighth graders went on a fun career day field trip. We learned more about the medical area, agriculture and technology. While talking to our peers, we learned that they really liked the hands-on activities. Eighth grade is getting ready for our promotion activities. On May 23, we will have a banquet dance from 5:15 and 9:15. On May 24, we have our all-day bowling trip. On May 25, we will have our promotion ceremony, which starts at 6.
Thank you for everything over the years. We are so thankful for the opportunities you have given us while we have been in this district.
We will, we will now be passing out cards Student Council has made for you. Have a good rest of your evening.
Just want to say you girls have done a great job when we opened back up the means. You've been at every one. And this is our last meeting with you girls. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. I think you've represented your school extremely well. You are both very well spoken and we appreciate having you. We will certainly look, wish you, our best to you as you move on and you'll be missed. So, thank you.
All right, girls. Thank you.
Is the charter, charter students, are they, is there any other?
No. Moving on to 8.3, 2021 and 2022 reclassification of English fluent proficiency. Mr. Brazil?
Okay, so every year, one of the most exciting things, I think for me, having been a second language learner myself, at the age of nine, I came from Portugal and didn't know a word of English. So learning English is extremely important in this community and not just in this community, but obviously in the state and in our country. And it is amazing to see the hard work that staff and students have put together to where tonight we can honor a large number of students who have done so well that they have been reclassified as being English proficient. Doesn't mean that they have lost their first language and we certainly don't want to encourage that by any means. My encouragement would be, keep learning both and you will be a better person for, or even more than two if you can. But tonight, I also have Mrs. Stewart is here and she is our EL coordinator and has done an amazing job. A little bit later, I will share something. But today, she is here with Ms. Rosales, who will do some translating. And so we'd like to present certificates to all of the students and thank them for their hard work and show them that you've done it and you can do it and you will continue to do and do well. And we wish you that.
For the very last time, it is my privilege to recognize our students who have been reclassified fluent English proficient. This will be the last time that Ms. Stewart will present these presentations because it's her last year. These students have been required to work twice as hard as their English-only peers. As additional language learners, they have been learning all content material for each subject while learning English. For these students, it's not only a miracle, but also a great effort that their children have made because they are learning English and not only that, but all the academy. So mathematics, science, everything else, including learning English. So all of this is, as any student, you have been working double in what the rest of their family or classes are doing. This takes determination and support. And of course, they need determination and of course, the help of you to continue motivating them to continue doing this work. We acknowledge their teachers' instruction and support that made reclassification possible. But most of all, we acknowledge their family's support. We appreciate that you have made learning a priority and supported your child in every possible way. We know that a lot of this work is also helped by the teachers. They help their children, but at the same time, all of this work also depends on you as parents. You can't have this without the help of you, the time, the energy. Sometimes, one gets frustrated because his student doesn't do what he wants. But we see a great advantage of seeing the great honor of you as parents contributing to the development of your children. Well, all students being recognized line up at the back of the room. So if you just stand in line up right at the very back. All the students who came to be recognized, certified, and can make a line up. When your name is called, you'll come forward to receive your certificate. I would like to ask that the audience hold their applause until all names have been called. Only the audience can wait until we nominate all the students to applaud. Thank you. We will first recognize students who were reclassified during the 2021 school year and due to COVID restrictions weren't able to be recognized. The first names we're going to nominate are students who couldn't receive their certificate last year. Okay. And maybe they can pronounce the names correctly. So Aiker Aguirre. Diana Alvarado. José Alejandro Manuelos. Karina Gaminos Zamora. Emiliano Núñez Parra. Allison Ochoa. Sofía Pulido. José Ramzes Ramirez. Ruby Ruiz Armandari. César Santos.
I'm very proud of Paola. She's been in the country less than three years and has become fluent proficient.
So she will receive an hug because she's only been in the country for three years and now she's bilingual. All right, these are for this year. Vicente Carillo Orozco. Cheshid González García. Jocelyn Guzmán. Javier López Lomberas. Giovanni Ortega. Jaden Peñalosa Chavez. Adiel Rios. Hector Rios. Giselle Rodríguez. George Sanchez. Christian Sereno Sanchez. And Christopher Sereno Sanchez. Let's give them all a round of applause.
I just want to add that when you guys get into middle school and high school, now that you're reclassified, it gives you a much better schedule. And that test, how hard it was, it'll be worth it when you get a little older. You'll understand.
If we could, Mr. President, if we could have families, if you would like to partake, we have some waters and cookies, probably not the best sugar. I know, Josué, this is not looking very good. But those are available. You are welcome to partake and you are also welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting if you wish.
We'll take a short recess starting at 6:20, which is right now. So, and get some pictures, guys.
So parents, if you want to stay, you can. There are also sandwiches and water for you. You don't have to stay all around. If you want to leave, we'll leave. But if you want to stay, we'll leave.
Written, oral, and verbal. Thank you. Welcome back from our quick recess. We're moving on to 8.4, presentation 2021-22 retiree. Mr. Brazil?
Well, tonight, I get the privilege of sharing a token of the appreciation from this school district, from the board, from parents, from students, for the hard and amazing work that three individuals have paid to this district and continue to do so. So it is with great privilege that I first would like Ms. Judy Lowe, if you would come up. And that is just a small token. We want to thank you for 17 years of service to Keys and to all the students. You are truly an amazing individual and I wish you all the best as you retire. You will be missed. If you ever want to come back, you can. Next individual is from Spratling Middle School and it is Mr. Ellis. If Mr. Ellis would come up. That is a small token of appreciation. I wanted to thank you for 21 years of service to the district. And you have served in education for far longer than that, both as a board member as well as a teacher. So I wish you all the best. And again, you too are welcome to come back anytime. Subbing is available if you need.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. And the last person, but certainly not least, is Ms. Carolyn Stewart, if she would please come up. All of you know that Carolyn, especially tonight, was very special, I'm sure, and I completely understand, to see her last group. But the impact you've had is something that will live for a very long time and go on. And so your 14 years of service are certainly appreciated. And I am thankful for what you have done for this community. And I appreciate all the hard work of paperwork, testing, assessments, and having reports finished on time. So congratulations and I wish you absolute, you too may sub anytime you'd like.
And just while I'm here, I was made aware of today that Ms. Rosales, Ms. Letizia Rosales, was named Teacher of the Year by the Rotary Club of Turlock. So I would like to recognize and congratulate her on that. And Ms. Rosales will be taking on the duties of Ms. Stewart as the English Language Development Coordinator for Keys School District. So we are so excited. I know Mrs.
I know Mrs. Brewer is very happy because she didn't want to lose a teacher from the middle school. But we are thankful that you are here to serve our students. So thank you.
I just want to say a couple of things in this moment. Ms. Lux, I love going in your classroom. Sometimes I like catching you without kids when you're on your break and you're walking through because it was great just to socialize with you. And that's one thing, so we went to one of the School Bells Awards with her. And that's when I really got to socialize with you and I really appreciate that night. And from then on, I think we've been really friendly. So we're going to miss you. Mr. Ellis, all I can say is back when, when we had the six store outdoor ed, you coming up here and speaking with passion, you changed a lot for a lot of kids. And hopefully that passion lives on with the board that's here because you made a big difference that night. And Ms. Carolyn Stewart, not only do this graduation is all about what you've done and accomplished with your team, but you've done a lot of volunteer after hours for this district and for this campus. And it's important and we appreciate it. Anybody else?
Well, I would definitely say if it was entirely up to me, it would be confetti all up above. And I would hit the golden buzzer for each of everyone, you know that. So thank you so much for your service, everyone, so much. And that's putting it just so mildly. There's so much deeper and so much more meaning I want to convey. But I just hit the button for you, know that. Thank you.
It's like saying, enjoy your retirement. You're gonna love it.
Jimmy knows he's retired.
Yeah.
All right, with nothing else, we'll move on to consent items. Action prepared for consent calendar are consistent with adopted and approved policies of the district and are deemed routine in nature. They'll be acted upon in one motion without discussion unless members of the board request an item be removed from the consent calendar. In that event, it'll be taken up on the order indicated on the main agenda. Any questions or concerns, nine point one through nine point three? All right, do we have motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have first, do we have second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to action items, 10.1, approval of certified confidential management personnel action items. Any questions or concerns? Do we have motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have first, do we have a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.2, approval of MOU between KUSD and Keys USD Board of Trustees for allocation of state of California Health and Human Service Agency grant funds. Mr. Brazil?
Yes, these were funds that were allocated from the state for us to administer and to take on the duty of providing testing for not only employees but for students as needed. And so this is an agreement for some of those funds to go towards paying interim health, which we had to contract out with to have an individual qualified to do so. And then stipends for the individuals listed for their taking on the extra duties to do so.
All right, any questions or concerns? We have motion to approve?
I motion.
We have first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.3, approval of the 2022-23 Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators and Annual Statement of Need 30-Day Substitute, Mr. Brazil?
So this is a kind of a housekeeping item at the end of each year. As we prepare for the new coming year, we want the board to recognize that there may be times where we can't find a fully credentialed individual to take on the duties. And so we at times either have to hire and they then join either a PIP or a STIP, which is basically an internship or a program where they are or continue to learn and to master the techniques in good teaching. So every year we have to basically have the board approve that if we can't find someone who is fully, that we will do our best to hire someone who does not, but who qualifies for extra support. So that's what we're asking for all of that. And it includes substitutes, as you know. However, this year so many changes went on about the governor allowing individuals to substitute with fewer things. But this goes straight to the Commission on Teacher Credentiaing and they authorize us to then hire. And it's audited by the county.
And we've done this for many years and actually hire teachers that come in on these circumstances, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Any questions, concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll motion.
Have a first, have a second?
I'll second.
Jimmy?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10.4, approval of 2022-23 Career Inspiration MOU between KUSD and SCOE. Is that what the kids went and did today?
Yes, this is a or an agreement for individual students to take these field trips to basically look at career exploration. So today we had a group that went and they looked into farming, into technology, into different career fields. And so this is for field trips to continue to be done for students who want to pursue a career. And sometimes you think, well, at this point, they can't be ready. No, they're, they're ready and they start looking at those and particularly in junior high. So we're asking that the board approve the, the MOU between the Keys District and the County Office of Ed who puts on some of these programs.
It really help them choose classes in high school if they have an idea of where they want to go. Any questions or concerns? Do we have motion to approve?
I motion.
I have a first?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10.5, approval of KTA Sunshine Proposal for the 2022-23 School Year. Mr. Brazil?
And I'm asking that the board approve or accept the sunshine proposal from KTA for the coming school year so that we can set meetings and begin negotiating for the new school year.
Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have first, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10.6, approval of District Sunshine Proposal for KTA for 2022-23 School Year. Mr. Brazil?
So part of the process of sunshining, not only does the bargaining unit submit, but also the district submits. So this is our request to also go to the bargaining table.
Yeah, if, if, if one of the students had asked you, what does sunshining mean? Give me that definition.
Bringing to, bringing to bearing or to, or to the front. To light, to be exposed or.
Stephanie had a good answer. You want to jump up to the microphone?
No, she said bringing it to light, bringing it to light. I love it.
All right, making it public. It's, it's, it's a way that if the public wants to know, for example, what the unions were wanting to bargain, then this would be a public place where anyone can look at that and say, well, is it contract language? Is it benefits and salaries? Is it working conditions? Is it a number of other things? Is it leaves or, or other pay related stipends even? So it's just, it's being, it's, it's forcing everyone to be transparent to say, here's what we're looking at, here's where our intents are and we're ready to go to, to the table.
Thank you for that.
Thanks for asking that for a student.
Right, well, I just have a feeling I'm going to be asked that one.
All right. Did we approve that one, Dana? No? Which one are we on? Do we approve it?
No.
Do I have motion to approve after Wes's great question? We have first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.7, approval of continuance of CSEA MOU extension. We hold this every month, Mr. Brazil?
This is, this is, the CSEA is continuing to engage with an MOU during the COVID times and what our current agreement is in place.
Everything still good?
Yes.
All right, any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
First, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to 10.8, approval of BBK Architect Quotes for KES and SMS Modernization Products. Mr. Brazil?
So we're asking, we've shared with the board the, the costs of what we have put together as the, the needs of kind of the district. So both the projects that will take place at SMS, the projects that will take place at KES with facilities and, and other things like the, the track or, or the field being turned into a much use, more useful place than it is at this point. But also, for example, the large project at KES will be all of the windows and along the facade there that are kind of, some of them are almost like there's a false wall in between them and obviously air circulation is terrible. So what we are doing is asking the board to approve the work we have begun with architects who are developing that project. The other thing I have to, obviously this is all using SER one-time funds that are allowed only for these things. The problem is that we have to extend them by 2024, 25, depending on what it is. And we're hoping that we'll get extensions because the process to get any project approved is very difficult and some of it has to go to DSA. They're telling us, you know, we're, we're not looking at anything that's not two or three months out or any of those things. But so today all we are asking the board to do is to approve the architect to work on these modernization projects. And we then at some point are hoping to go out to bid for all of these projects as soon as we have the go-ahead.
All right. Any questions or concerns? We have motion to prove?
I'll motion.
We have first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
He beat you, Jimmy. It's your track, you should have been on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Way to beat him, Mike. We'll show him. All right, moving on to discussion items, SER three.
SER three, we've submitted our, our plans and continue to implement the plans. For example, our summer school will be using not only, it'll kind of be divided into two components where there will be a morning session and then an extended session. The, most of these plans were put together with how we were going to show that we were going to address the needs of students and fill in the gap of instruction that they missed while long distance learning. So what we're, part of the, the issue, and it's not just SER funds, but all of these plans come together is to say, really, they want students to, they want us to provide instruction for nine hours a day. We have to offer it. It doesn't mean that everyone has partaken in it. But if you can imagine, this will be, that's why we're trying it in summer school. We're doing the first four and a half hours of a regular traditional summer school. And then ACES has agreed to provide enrichment activities because that's the other thing. It can't just be play. It has to be enrichment and tied to academics for the remainder of the day. My only concern, and I think I've shared this with, with many people, is, you know, it, it's tough to be an adult somewhere for nine hours, much less a student. I mean, that, that's just a tough thing to do. So again, all we're being told is you have to provide. So we're going to do our best to provide with limited staffing because there are positions that at times we can't fill. So we're thankful that ACES has been able to partner with us and with PAL to, to be able to provide those services. And again, that's not just the SER, but it's the ELO plan. It's the every alphabet soup plan you can think of, including the LCAP. So, and there are multiple, anytime we change anything, we have to update it and it has to go be reposted on the website and reapproved. But we are, we're living through it, as Stephanie knows well and Raul about the finance part of it.
Maybe some of our retirees could donate a little time.
I think they.
Walk out, walk out now. That's what you get for staying, for watching the meeting. It only gets worse from here. Mr. Ellis is off the hook because he walked out.
I'll make that motion.
All right, okay. Any questions or anything on SER three? All right, 11.2, SMS track, meeting update?
So the, the update is we have everything turned into the architects now that we have it approved and we will be trying to proceed as quickly as we can with then going out to bid and proceeding with the project.
Jimmy?
I'm all excited about it.
Jimmy asks every week, if sometimes twice a week, he comes in to find out how, where that track is.
It's still there, Jimmy.
Walk across it, looks good from the road. If you walk across it, it's pasture-like. It's up and down, up and down. Kids can't really play out there safe. It'll be great when it's finished.
All right, we're just going to put your name next to that one, everyone. All right, moving on to reports, 12.1, superintendent report?
Okay, well, we continue to seek candidates for art teacher for the coming school year. We thought we had a candidate and then candidate chose to go elsewhere. We're still looking for a seventh grade teacher and we'll be interviewing for both the seventh grade teacher so that we can have a teacher on special assignment to cover vacancy. And also we have to, or we have to hire to cover the vacancy that Ms. Rosales will, will leave from, from her classroom as she takes on the EL coordinator role for next year. So those are kind of the, the big hires that we are working on. The LCAP plan continues to be worked on. It must be approved or be ready for public by June 16th and then finally approved on June 23rd. We continue to work on all the building and facilities projects. We've met with the architect, obviously legal counsel, because all of these things have to be approved. And at this point, we will continue to prioritize and look at what the bids come in as to how feasible it is to do some of these projects or do we have enough or what we're going to do. We're definitely on, on a countdown mode as we approach the end of the school year. This is, as all of, all of you know, is probably the busiest time of year in hectic. And I want to also thank the, the fact that I think everybody is really looking forward to a break. But I also am very thankful that we have staff who are willing to work through summer school because that will be an entire month. And that certainly leaves them basically July. And I think batteries need to be recharged and understandably so. Mr. Murray is working on summer school and notices they'll be going out tomorrow or later on in the week. And then on the, we're going to first try and seek those individuals who by assessment have shown that they are one or two years behind so that they are given priority to attend. However, as I said before, some of the funds indicate that we have to offer it to everybody. So we're first going to do kind of an invitation and then on the 20th send out, okay, we have open, is anyone interested so that we can, and if we have to, we'll put waiting lists on. I'm excited about reviewing student work portfolios with KTL for both the high school and middle school. I'm looking forward to that. I'm also looking forward to attending both open houses and talent show that we have coming up. And I will be scheduling negotiation sessions with KTA since the sunshining proposals are now approved. And we have been able to conduct interviews to fill most of our open positions. And I think a lot of that really was helpful to participate in the county's recruitment fair. I think that was very, very good to be there. I wanted to congratulate all of the EL students for meeting the, this huge milestone of being reclassified and all of the work that they do, but also obviously what staff does to make that happen because it really is a mission. And I, as I said before, I, I want us to celebrate the dual language and, and appreciate that. But it, it is amazing to see how quickly, for example, the young lady with three years in the country and has become fluent English proficient. That was, that's no small thing and I, I think that that needs to be celebrated as it was. I also wish to congratulate the three retirees that we're honoring here tonight. Certainly my most sincere gratitude and congratulations on, on your ability to retire and, and to say, I don't have to get up tomorrow. I think that I am envious of that, but thank you for all of your work and you really will be missed. So thank you for touching the lives of kids and families in this, in this community. I want to also congratulate all of our KTL Junior High and Spratling Middle School graduates. And I also congratulate the KTL seniors as they graduate in the coming weeks. I wish everyone a great summer and some time off and I hope that people really do and recharge. And it's needed. And I'm hoping that we continue with the freedoms of not dealing with the craziness of COVID and that things continue well. Our next board meeting is on June 16th and then on the 23rd where we'll update the LCAP and the budget will be approved as well. And that is all I have at this. Again, I wanted to congratulate Ms. Rosales on, on Teacher of the Year since that happened today. Linda is not in here, but she is also being honored later on this week and at the county for her support of the ACES program and really being supportive of, of making it happen there and to look out for kids, bringing supplies, supporting the program and encouraging kids. So we certainly want to thank, thank her for that. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Moving on to board member comments, Mr. Immens?
Well, as far as the retirees, I, I do know how you feel right now. You will like it. You're going to miss. Well, as far as the retirees, I I do know how you feel right now. You will like it. You're gonna miss us a little bit, but you'll get over it pretty quick, I think. There's a lot of fun things to do out there. Now you have the time to do it. So congratulations for all your hard work, and you deserve this. The other day, we had an opportunity to go to the junior senior KTL banquet. It was a lot of fun. I got to meet Colonel Mustard. I had never met him before. Found out it was Jeff later, but. They put on a good show. The juniors always take care. They serve the seniors every year and make it really feel special. Nice to attend.
All right, moving on to Mr. Green.
Well, I think the main thing tonight for me. Is thanking the retiring teachers. I said it a little earlier. I don't even think us saying thank you is enough, but. I I can maybe leave you with this, and and I I know you already know this, but I'll just reiterate. The thanks that I I believe I would like to extend to you is maybe just seeing the students that you've affected, that you have mentored. Seeing the successes in them later in their life will be the thanks. And I think that that's what I want to articulate tonight is. Is looking at my life and seeing the teachers that influenced me and the decisions I've made in my life. I've pulled from them teachers. I pulled from the the mentoring that they gave me from the fifth grade, sixth grade, and you know, and I'm fifty six now. And I still pull from them teachers. So the thanks that I want to give you is to know that. It'll always be remembered by every and each one that you've influenced. So thank you tonight. Thank you very much. That's what I have to say.
All right, thank you. Mr. Burnell?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate all the retirees, and I know you're gonna enjoy your time off and enjoy your family. And, you know, I take my hat off to you for impacting the lives that you've touched. Like Wesley has said, there was, I can remember, I'm fifty five, and I remember coaches that impacted my life to this day. So and also all the teachers that dedicated their life into education, impacting young people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
I would like to say thank you to all the teachers and staff for their hard work this year. I know it's been tough the last couple of years, but. You guys went and got through it, and so did we, and have a great summer.
One last thing, Jeff.
Ah, geez, Wes.
I know. Well, I, the Teacher of the Year, I don't know if I know her.
Of course you do. She's from town.
Right.
It's because your mask is on.
I think that's what it is, right? Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Her mom used to be at Spratling, and then she's my age. We grew up together.
Yes.
See, you knew her.
Why do you look so much older than her?
What?
Why do you look so much older than her?
Thanks, guys. I was just wondering about this age difference. All right, I have a whole list. Was able to go to the KTL Elementary Talent Show. That was great to watch. All three of us went to that one. It was great to see Terry pop up. I didn't know her grandkids went to that school. It was even better that her youngest granddaughter was a Dodgers fan, and I got her riled up against Jimmy. So we were causing havoc in the back row. Dodger, Giant, Dodger, Giant. It was kept going back and forth. Got to go to the softball game. That was a great time to play with the eighth graders. I did hit home run, but the second time I hit, I fell. And I look really ridiculous, but I I got a point at least. And then I was able to catch a ride to the field trip with the student body because Ms. Brazil puts it in the Friday letter. And so I got in contact with the right right teacher and went to that one. We went to the Turlock Animal Shelter, and that was a pretty fun field trip. We got to. See the dogs and hear about their careers and stuff. Trotter Dinner was a great night. Unfortunately, I was only one dressed up, but that made me feel even more special, so I was okay with it. But like Jimmy said, it's really great to see the the juniors cater to the seniors. It's like, thank you for being my friend, being a classmate. And sending them off and their families off to a good year with a good slideshow and some stories about it. It was the clue theme, which they had a fun game for us all to play. It was a little easy. We all got it. We all won. But we usually don't win games when we get invited. End of the year events, there are so many events. Please try to make it as many as we can. It's it's so chaotic. We can't make it all, but it's great to go. The two open houses coming up, and my final thing is, I said a little bit earlier about Roxanne and Jocelyn. Come to our meetings. They've already left, but they're sports girls, they're student body girls, they're volunteer girls. They put a lot into. Coming to the meetings and their and their education. I'm gonna miss them. I loved watching them play sports, but they were always the eager ones to. Come and help and be friendly, so I appreciate all that. Moving, oh, and the retirees, but I already said a little speech about that. Moving on to item thirteen point one, the next board meeting will be June sixteenth. At five thirty, regular session at six, and there's also another one, the following one, because of the budget.
Twenty thirty.
Uh, do we have motion to adjourn?
I motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys all for coming.
Oh.